Start with the Ofed Commission. And looking around the room here. Wayne?
Here.
Dina?
Here.
Derek?
Here.
And myself, Jeff Hudson. Anybody else in the commission here?
Uh, yeah, Luke.
Oh, Luke, sorry, Luke. Okay, we'll move down to Town of Dunn. And I will call Town of Dunn to order. And roll call Steve.
Steve, present.
Okay, and Jeff Hudson. We have a quorum. And we'll move down to Town of Oregon.
I'll call this meeting to order, roll call. Fred?
Here.
Jason?
Harlan?
Here.
Wayne, here. And Kate?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Town of Rutland.
I will call this meeting to order. Roll call Nancy Metvic?
Here.
Bob Postel?
Here.
Dina Sentner, present. We have a quorum.
Great. And Bill is for our time.
All right, I will call the privileged Oregon Board to order. And Candy?
Um, Beshin?
Here.
Bealow?
Here.
Bali?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Peterson? Stitch?
Here.
And Watch?
Here.
So we have four.
We are good enough.
Okay. You're all good. Okay, six, uh, business. And item A. Update on the status of the Oregon area fire EMS district contract. Glenn and Phil could maybe help out with this a little bit if anybody has any questions that we have time to review the contract here.
So I guess I'll take the first staff for the group. So basically, number years ago when the commission hired me, which is going on five years, but not to count anymore, but it'll be five years in August now that I've been here. So I'm remembering those days, Jerry, so. Anyhow, I pointed it out early on with Phil and the different commissioners that we had that we needed to update that document, that contract that we have between the three townships and also the village of Oregon. That document is either ninety-five or ninety-nine, I think it says in that document, as I recall. So it's ninety-five, so we just need to get that up to how we're operating today and all that kind of stuff. So about, about probably pre-COVID, we started with the commission where we had a work group on it. So the fills of the world, the Jennas of the world, uh, different people, uh, Town of Rutland chair was on that group at one time too. We had, we got about three different boards or different reps now that have worked on that document over the last probably two years. We've got about seven thousand dollars in it thus far with the lawyers and getting all the language where we need to be and all that kind of stuff. A couple of months ago, the commission is basically, uh, at the point now that they're ready to turn it back to each municipal partner for review and making sure that we're where we need to be with that document. Uh, a lot of archaic language, different things of that nature. Phil may want to speak to some of that. But that's been updated. We're ready to turn that over. Uh, biggest thing that I would just say as the fire chief in general and looking at budgets and all that, we're not in a position to spend a lot of money legally on it in twenty-twenty-one, but we're definitely ready to, uh, bring it to all of the municipal partners and move that forward and try to get that done, you know, late twenty-one or early twenty-two, so that's where we are. Any commissioners or anybody that's already been part of that, if they'd like to say anything, or Phil, maybe you'd have a few good words?
Well, I certainly prefer to any questions first.
Any commissioners, uh, any, anything to add? Steve?
I'm not, I'm, but I just had, is there like a summary of any substantive changes to it, or have you let us?
Yes. All of that stuff will be said to all the municipal partners. All that stuff has been looked at by the board, uh, the legal staff for the fire district looked at it. Everything's ready to go. Commission's ready to turn it loose. Uh, we were going to bring both of those documents and then we would have made that agenda probably about another, what, what do you think, Martin, another seventy-five pages longer? So, but we're gonna turn that over very shortly and then focus and look at it, take your time, all that kind of stuff, and then talk to your reps and feedback to myself and Jeff, and then we'll work that document through. We've been working on that for, again, the last two years. It's how many years out of date, but we're there. Good thing is I believe we're all getting along and we're working together. That's the positive stuff, uh, that we have going, so let's get this thing updated and, uh, go from there. So that's where I kind of have for an update on the contract. Phil, maybe?
Just, uh, just add that the document that's in your packet is not the revised agreement.
No?
And so, uh, the chief will distribute, uh, via the commission, the documents for you for, uh, for your each municipality. Municipality and their attorneys to review, uh, when they're ready. Any other questions for me?
Phil, is it fair to say that the majority of the changes were, um, language edits?
Uh, there were statute changes that had, uh, the statutes actually changed over the years. Uh, there was a lot of archaic language in that, uh, when they wrote the ninety-five agreement, they wrote some provisions in there. Or, uh, when they revised the ninety-five agreement, they put some provisions in there such as how long the new commissioners could serve. So the terms would be staggered, things like that. The description of the area of the actual district was no longer accurate because of, uh, substantial changes in, at least in Rutland. So, uh, we've changed that. There were, uh, some, uh, again, archaic, uh, him and hers in there, uh, that, uh, one of the commissions pointed out that needed to be updated.
Some duplication?
Pardon me?
Some duplication was removed?
No, I don't think there was a lot of duplication. There were a lot of things poorly worded in, in the, in my opinion, and it turned out to be the attorney's opinion as well. There were actually a couple of situations that arose, uh, while I was a commissioner and, and had to refer to the contract and found that it was lacking to give him, uh, said any guidance. And so I, I tried to incorporate those experiences. I can't say that it'll be any more brief, but I believe it will be much more concise. I would just finally add that, uh, if, if we gave the task of writing this agreement to each of the municipalities, I have trouble with that word, attorneys, I'm sure we would get three or four completely different documents.
Yeah, everyone.
So, uh, I think we need to bear in mind that when we propose changes, it may not be exactly how maybe your attorney might write it, but if it does the job, then maybe that's good enough. And, and I think that's in each group's own interest because you could go back and forth for months on end with your attorney, and we all know what that costs. So, um, I guess if everyone looks at it as, does this suffice, then we should go with it.
And again, two years, I know one night alone, we had like a three and a half hour Zoom meeting with Jenna and, uh, and the commission at that time. We've had, we've got a lot of hours in this. How, exactly how many hours? I, I would probably say, what do you think, Wayne, twenty?
I'm sure.
Maybe more. The group really spent some time going across the document, but it is a living document and it's, it's the nuts and bolts of this operation. So I think we had to do the time and, and do a good job of, of making it for what, uh, everybody knows this fire district and EMS district adds. So I think it's, it'll be a good thing for the future, so. That's where we are with that.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to B. Review of commission approval, approved twenty-twenty audit. The audit was done again by Justin Block. And this has already been approved by the commission. Do we have any questions, comments about the audit?
And again, I guess the nuts and the bolts of this here are the things that really make the difference, I think, and when we talked about it at the commission and everything else. If you look at some of the stuff, basically you take a one-point-seven million dollar budget and you take a year of COVID and all the unknowns and you take all the different things that we've had that we modified and had to do this last year, uh, and still get, you know, receive revenue on calls and runs and that kind of stuff. At the end of the day, uh, on the budget, if you look at it, we had like sixty-two thousand to the positive. We sold some other, uh, loose goods approved by the commission for decommissioning some things. We have about four thousand dollars there for a positive. Overall, about sixty-six thousand had added to the bottom line. And I'll be honest with you, uh, I don't know how long I can keep doing this, my friend Jerry. So it's hard to, uh, that's a lot of unknowns. You take, you, you just think about the unknowns about, uh, calls and EMS revenue and all that kind of stuff. First of all, we don't know how many runs you're gonna get, then charging and then the money and the turnaround and everything else to balance that all out. Fortunately, it all worked out.
You've done some good work, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments? Okay, moving on to, uh, C. Review of twenty-twenty-one financial statements as of June thirty. And those are in the packet.
Again, Jeff and everyone that's here, that's just a snapshot of where the fire district is, fire EMS district is, sorry, uh, at current, uh, through the end of June of this year. Kind of gives you some ideas where the dollars and cents of that operation is, so. All well, uh, doing well right now, all that kind of stuff. No unforeseeable, uh, uh, air conditioners going out or anything of that nature, knock on wood, no one. Uh, but, uh, all, so far, so good, so.
Okay, any questions? Okay, moving on to D. Review of commission recommended twenty-twenty-two district budget. Glenn can probably help us with that.
So let's see if we can find that. So that's back in here, and it looks like, Martin, you got six D on that? Is that correct? You got a stamp up in the right-hand corner?
Yep.
Yep, so six D. Uh, for those that are going along, thank you, Harley. Uh, for those that are going along with paper or Wayne, six D up in that right-hand corner. So just to kind of give you a little snapshot of where we are and how we've done this, and maybe, maybe just educational for, um, new board members in different places, uh, both in the village and the townships or wherever we may have. So one of the things that, uh, basically the commission has, uh, that we have done, I guess, probably Phil and others, uh, we've talked about this a while ago. I've been putting a draft, we start with kind of like our capitals back in April of this year. We start laying our capitals out. We look at our capital plans. We've got the capitals pretty well. I believe the team that I have working with, you know, I don't know if Gina's here tonight or not, but we've got a, a good team of folks over there. We try to list everything out on our capital, so there's no surprises in that fire district, because there's a lot of little loose items here and there and different things and all that stuff that goes with this operation. At the end of the day, we tried to, uh, make a plan for at least ten years, and we updated that plan again this spring, uh, through twenty-thirty. And a copy of that is in here, so if anybody ever has those questions, I know Derek and I have had, spent some time on it, uh, Wayne and I have spent some time in the past on it, that kind of stuff. But we kind of try to keep that up to date each and every year and keep that as a moving, living document. To try to keep that as accurate as we possibly can. Something happens to me or I'm gone tomorrow that the next person coming in at least has a, uh, a plan in place, at least a little bit of groundwork that they can go off of and start someplace instead of from scratch. So those are the things that we put in place the last five years. Here to there is what we basically did, starting out in April, uh, we looked at those capitals. You could say the first read or whatever, and brought it to the board and then talked about the different things. Uh, and then we did, kind of did the same thing and get it in May. And then, uh, we dropped in, uh, sat down with Lisa over at the, uh, at the village, basically our finance department for the fire district, our contract services, for those that don't realize the village does that for us. Sat down with her, looking at where our dollars and cents are, what we can afford and all that kind of stuff, started putting in, uh, draft budgets and different things together. Here or there, we've had some good dialogue with the commission about different things that affect our operations and our calls and all that other kind of stuff. At the end of the day, basically, uh, in our July meeting, the commission has moved basically to make, move forward our capital improvement plan and also our, our proposed budget that we would like to, uh, have for twenty-twenty-two. And basically the things as you look at, as I'm sure Jerry looked at and others, uh, when we go in and we really look at this, this is about dollars and cents and about salaries and that kind of stuff. And it's not about our full-time staff. Keep in mind our full-time staff is organized labor and that kind of stuff. We have contracts with those folks and everything else, so we know where that is. On that end of the budget, it's about a four percent with the healthcare benefits and that kind of thing, and that's what Lisa has it currently, uh, as part of this proposal. We might need a, a short little bit to bridge up, uh, on the healthcare, uh, maybe, that may be in the six percent. I don't think Candy, we've heard on those numbers yet from the state where those healthcare numbers are gonna be, correct, Martin? So where, where we really have in this budget here, if you look at some lines, and it's in the volunteer staffing line, it's the fifty-two. Uh, and we're gonna say, we'll go right to the second page, basically, go about midship down in there, it's fifty-two, one-fifty, uh, excuse me, not one-fifty, fifty-two, one-fifty-three. And you're basically looking at the volunteer reimbursement, and that's our paid-on-call and paid-on, uh, premise folks that we have. And that's basically the, uh, as I, I've said to the commission before, that's the, that's the one group that makes up all the differences. A, a full-time person's gone, if we need extra staffing, if we need this, that, or the other thing, that group usually makes that up. Uh, some of our organized labor folks, of course, you can look at some overtime hours and some of the straight time and that kind of stuff above. But for the most part, for the years that I've been here, that account has been way, uh, underfunded, and we've still been able to make the budget work with our, uh, with our cost pack coming on, uh, EMS calls and revenues and all that kind of stuff. Last year, if you go back for the people that have been with me and, and for memory, last year we put twenty thousand in that to try to start, uh, fixing that somewhat. To give people a perspective, uh, where we are, uh, currently in the dollars and cents and what our paid-on-call or our paid-on-premise people do. So the way this department does, works is basically, we've got our, our full-time folks, but our, our paid-on-call people would be people walking around the, uh, village or into the fire district that gets paid two dollars an hour for carrying a pager. And what that basically does is basically telling us that they're not gonna drink and they're gonna be available for a call for a set period of time. When that pager goes off, they go to a high, higher rate, not a lot higher rate, but they go to a, at least above minimum wage rate. So, and then those folks show up and give me their life and everything else and, uh, work with me day and night, year, year-round, you know, Christmas holidays, all that kind of stuff. Here nor then, or here nor there, at the end of the day, currently, our hourly rate max is twelve-twenty-five. That's what our max is for the fire district, which is a very low number for those folks. One of the things that I've been working with Jenna and, and board members in the current group that we have now is I've been trying to get this thing, you know, what happens if the federal government takes this to fifteen tomorrow, next year, or next day? You know, at a minimum, straight across the board, what do these numbers look like? And I've kind of shared that with our commission and our group already to, uh, have those discussions. Everyone, uh, this year has basically said to me the same thing. We know that we need to fix that. We want to fix that. We have to do it, uh, over a couple of years. And that's what this budget basically is doing, is trying to fix some of the stuff, uh, over a couple of years, trying to start that. It also has fifty thousand dollars in, uh, I believe it's fifty, uh, no, it's fifty for the volunteers, uh, in that line. Jerry looked, uh, like I'm losing him. Are we all okay so far?
We're good.
Okay. You're looking at that screen, okay. So, and the other thing that we, we put in there, just to kind of give you a perspective, as far as full-time people, there was eight full-time people here when I came here, uh, five years ago. We still have eight full-time paid people. So in twenty-twenty-two, next year, uh, proposing it to hire another position full-time, well, that's not gonna be until July first of, of twenty-two. To try to help with the budgets and offset the costs for all of our partners. So that's where it is currently. Everything else, I'd say for, uh, for example, is pretty much just moving numbers around, uh, that kind of stuff. Things really don't change at the end. But this is all about trying to retain people, trying to pay people a few more dollars and, uh, ensuring that we have, uh, we have not, knock on wood, we have not had a, a large problem of, uh, recruiting people. We get a lot of applications in here. Uh, however, I get a lot of people hired in full-time, full-time fire departments or full-time EMS departments someplace, and our turnover is quite large. This last spring, we had five people alone that basically went that direction. So, uh, we got a lot of young folks. They all on fire careers, firefighter, medic, that kind of thing. So we're in that kind of like minor league baseball and in that, in that, uh, going up the ranks per se, so. Any thoughts so far while I take a drink? So basically, that's where it is. As I think the commission is basically, I showed them some even more shocking numbers than this in one of the drafts, and, uh, I think everyone pretty much said, including our village, village partners, it's just like, Fire Chief, we understand your pain. We understand where you are with this, uh, hourly rate. Uh, but let's see what we can do to try to make this, uh, work. And, uh, I really appreciate the input from the townships, from the village reps, the different people that have talked and worked with me through that. So those are basically the numbers, uh, that we came up with, Jeff, and, uh, kind of put in front of everyone.
Sir? Questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
Chief, you gonna tell us about your raffle?
Oh, yeah, we'll get there. I'm sure Jeff's keeping me in line. Harley?
I have one comment. I am amazed that people are willing to put their lives on the line for twelve dollars to twenty-five cents an hour. That is, I mean, that's just an incredible testament to who they are as people, to, to willing to make that kind of a commitment and a sacrifice for that little bitty amount of money. So it's not about money for them, but they should be compensated.
Right. No, I, I appreciate that, and, and, and your words go a long way with, for that group and everybody. It's, it's about appreciating that group. Uh, again, most, a lot of that group are some of the folks that are, uh, live in the village here and been on the department for a long time. Uh, they never really got into this for any money, because they have other walks of life, other jobs, other careers. But it's about helping their, their neighbor, taking care of their neighbor, being there, uh, dropping everything, you know, just like tonight, uh, ten after five. You know, call of duty to the town of, uh, to the Town of Dunn. That's what that group is. Uh, today's younger, uh, generation, they're a little bit more about, uh, money and that kind of stuff, because they'll actually do a little bit more shopping. It's not like they will use QuickTrip against the fire district for dollars and cents, but they will use other fire districts where they can to try to, again, help themselves and move, move them around. So fortunately, we've been pretty good. Uh, I think we continue with this. I think we, again, we are in definitely need of that. If we don't have that core group, what that means to this group is that we have to hire more people. And when we hire peo- more people, Candy and, uh, Lisa can look at the numbers, I mean, we're looking in that seventy, seventy, eighty thousand dollars for a person. And what that's going to get you is basically, that's not including healthcare, but that what that's going to get you is twenty-four ninety, uh, twenty-four seventy-five, twenty-four hundred and seventy-five hours in, in a year, the way they work their shift work. So just keep that in mind. So, you know, you look throughout the state, I was, I had the, the chance of, uh, doing a lot of stuff for the state. Fire chief's been present in there a few times. And travel the state, and you look at different operations, you look at standalone stuff, and I'll use Superior, Wisconsin as one. You know, they have like twenty-some people on their department, twenty-four people, all, uh, career people, and they have just a few paid-on-call folks, because they can't find any. And of course, they're, they're paying a lot more. But if you look at the budgets for those operations standalone, where they don't have a lot of volunteer people close to them, they're actually bringing in people from, uh, uh, to the north up there on, to, and I can't even think of it right now, but, uh, Mason and those folks coming in from different directions off of fifty-three, uh, coming and helping them and that kind of stuff. They're bringing people from quite a distance, so that would be our options. I mean, and again, we have a lot of growth, a lot of potential growth. If you go back to our annual report where I talked about that annual report this last year, there were sixty-eight calls that we received helping in here on the ambulants, and we, uh, we gave up sixty, sixty-nine calls. So we went out sixty-eight times, we, uh, used one less. So there was sixty-eight, sixty-nine calls somehow that I tried, I'm trying to capture that for growth and revenue. It's about capturing those other calls. And you know, is, is one of the other thing is my team and as we, as we do this more, if we don't have the resource here to protect our people in the fire district, all I'm doing is taking that emergency and moving that somewhere else. And what I'm gonna say by that is if I need another, another ambulance in here and we don't have the extra staffing, uh, we're taking that emergency and moving it to Brooklyn, because Brooklyn's bringing in ambulants. And now we're taking that ambulance out of Brooklyn, and all of a sudden, Brooklyn gets a call, and now we're down into Belva. So we do not want to make hardships for our neighbors. We kinda, we have to kind of take on some of those responsibilities. And I think this is kind of a step in that right direction and trying to capture that and continue that forward, so. You know, we're growing, and we love to grow and all that kind of stuff, you know, all that stuff, mean stuff, but, uh, we've gotta grow our infrastructure and our operations at the same time, so that we're not behind. Sorry about that, boss.
Very good information, Chief. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, uh, E, review of commission recommended twenty-twenty-two district capital improvement plan. These are purchases, future purchases coming up here.
And again, this kind of all ties it together. It all comes back to the big documents and all that kind of thing. You basically have three pages. A few years ago, uh, the group, and I think it was the Town of Oregon, requested that we, we keep things separate as far as the vehicle purchase, the equipment, and also, uh, you know, the operations and all that kind of stuff. So it's basically all laid out. Lisa's got everything in with the current numbers, the evaluation, and also the populations from all the clerks, that kind of thing, so you can kind of see those numbers, all that kind of stuff. And then if you go to six E, for those that are following with me, six E is basically, again, going back to the CIP, the capital improvement plan. Basically, the ten-year plan that we basically looked at, the commission approved here this spring, kind of shows you all that kind of stuff. And then down on the bottoms of, of the six E, you can kind of see the twenty-twenty-one stuff that we're currently purchasing right now and getting it going and all that kind of stuff. And then you got the twenty-two stuff with the numbers for next year on the next page, which is basically, uh, looks like that's ten B. I don't know how that B came in as ten B, but that ten B on, on the right-hand corner. So.
From your beginning.
Okay. It just didn't get a stamp on it, huh?
The initial one did.
Okay. No, no problem. So that's where that is. And again, I, I take any questions, anything that we possibly can, and go from there.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, I looked through your audit and your financials through the year and your budget for next year. It always really responsible. You got a ton of money, well, not a ton of money, but you got a good, uh, cash reserve.
Fund balances, yes.
Uh, what I'm looking at though for the next six years here is two million dollars of new purchases of equipment. Where does that fit in? It's certainly not, your cash reserves aren't enough to do that, your fund balances, and do you see this going up over the next few years?
There is no doubt about it that some of this stuff is probably gonna have to go up if the purchases happen in it, and if we stick to that capital plan, Mike. You know, there's some of those things, you know, like, uh, some of the stuff in there, you start looking at, you know, land acquisitions and the unknowns about, uh, you know, the more three-story buildings we get, we're at, at some point, we're gonna need to stick this ladder in here someplace, and that ladder will not fit in the current building that we have. I think there's a lot of different things going on with, you know, just say the old village hall and what you have going, going on with that. The potential of staying onsite or moving some remote location and all that kind of thing. There are definitely going to be, the best I can put it in, in plain, simple English terms, there are definitely gonna be some growing pains in the future years. Uh, and how that all gonna play out yet, I don't know. I'm just being open and honest with you.
All I can ask.
Yep, thank you. Randy?
So Chief, I'm gonna give you a compliment. I've done this before, but I was, as the, as the former chair of the fire EMS, I find it great to know that Chief never pays full price for anything.
Shouldn't tell anybody that, Andy.
He never pays. I, I am amazed at how Chief handles the budget. He does not pay, pay full price. And the other thing, I think you, that you, a lot of people don't know, you go after any grants that are out there.
We do.
You are not afraid to go and, and a lot of times get them. Um, and so I just want, just wanna give you a compliment.
Well, thank you. I mean, it, it's hard to get you this federal money or state money or any of this stuff, uh, but, yeah, thank you, Randy.
And the crew pitch is into a lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do, and, and, and it's all about the crew, and it's about, you know, you go back, Harley, and you start talking about the hourly rates and everything else. It's about making them feel part of this operation. So I'll give you an example, and, and Dina knows this from the Town of Rutland too. We could have won, went out, uh, first and foremost, Jerry, I have to tell you, going back to tonight's call, that hundred and seventy-seven thousand of renewed radios you let me buy here a year ago worked out great tonight. So we had no problems. We talked to the sheriff. It worked flawless, so.
It may work, huh?
Everything worked perfect, and they're motorola's.
That's huge, right?
That is huge. So that's, that's a good thing. Here nor there, at the end of the day, when we bought those, we could have spent about eight or ten thousand dollars on radio pouches for forty radios. You can do the math. They're very expensive. However, we had some talented young individuals in our group that wanted to make these radio pouches from scratch, so I basically ended up buying some, uh, cow rawhide, and they made everything from scratch. Uh, I actually bought a sewing machine. Uh, they put all the stuff together. They did everything from scratch. They stuck Oregon on them. It, it worked out very well, and I only got like three hundred dollars in it. And I only got like three hundred dollars in it. Now, it took them a few months to do it, but the ownership and the pride that that group has had doing that goes a long way. And that's the type of men and women that we have over at the fire district, so.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any more questions, comments? Okay, we're at F, reminder of twenty twenty-one second payment to districts.
So Lisa basically sat, now she has me in bill collecting too, so I've got these, I've got these nice, these nice hard copy bound together audits. I got two for each municipality. The village already received our book, she snagged them and she took the villages' bills. But otherwise, I've got the second installment and also the capitals here. So I will hand these out after we get done and give them to the folks, but you'll have everything right here. And she said, any questions, call her or call me and we'll be more than happy to address whatever we need to do.
Now, do I have to pay a check tonight?
No, you're okay. Credit card, Jerry. Yeah, or PayPal.
Okay, very good. We're down to our last item. E, Oregon Area Fire EMS Association raffle and chance to win ten thousand dollars. Gene, can you tell us something about that?
Sure, Arlen's gonna buy ten more.
We just traded shrine ones for these ones.
Yeah, it cost me money to sell it.
It cost me too.
So the association's having our annual money raiser because we couldn't have one last year. So this year, we decided we're gonna have a money raffle. So first prize is gonna be ten thousand dollars, second prize is three thousand, and then we pay down to thirty-four places.
Twenty-nine places.
Twenty-nine places. Arlen's in the thirty-two and thirty. So tickets are a hundred dollars apiece, you get four chances. We divided the ticket up, so if you didn't want to put in a hundred dollars of your own, you could put in fifty and your wife put in fifty and each fit the money, if that works. So this is gonna be our fundraiser instead of the bowling tournament because with the pandemic and that, it's still kind of hippie. So we had our raffle last year, and then the chief and I, we got audited the first year. So we're on the up and up, everything's above table, so.
Four hours. Four hours of auditing.
We learned a lot, what you can do and what you can't do. And he says you definitely don't want to play bingo. That's when it gets nasty.
So again, just for the group, the association is five oh one C three, and all that stuff is in place, recognized by the federal government, state government, all that kind of stuff. So we got everything up to speed where it needs to be. Like Gene said, we went through this audit. And this is actually, the auditor actually brought this to us a couple of years ago and said, Fire Chief and Captain, this is what you guys should talk to your association about. They're doing this all over the state, they're getting rid of sending out donation letters and all that. So we're just eliminating all the donation letters for anybody in the fire district. There's so many scams going on on the social media and stuff like that, people calling up all the time and saying, hey, this or that. This way here is just gonna be these tickets, it's gonna be this one fundraiser, and that's gonna be it. And the association, you say, what did they do with their dollars? What they do with their dollars is they've been very jealous to the fire district. They spent about twelve thousand about a year and a half ago, and they bought a Combi spreader tool for one of the fire trucks, battery-operated, believe it or not. So we can take it down in the ditch over a hundred feet deep and just carry it wherever, that kind of stuff. But they've been, they've been buying a lot of different tools, specialty tools. They helped in our water rescue stuff with that project with Brooklyn where we bought the boat and we bought the Gumby suits to go into water, cold water, and all that kind of stuff. So they've been doing a lot of different things. And again, the young men and women over there that are part of this, they have the drive, they have that wanting to get the best stuff that we can. If it might be a thermal imaging camera or, you know, boats or different things or lights on on top of helmets to be able to go work in the dark when we're cutting down trees wherever we're at or whatever it is. They put a lot of different dollars and cents back into the fire district and also the community with the community outreach and education and that stuff. So I can't say enough about that group. They do a very great job for us and I appreciate their efforts in fundraising.
And the drawing's gonna be December second while we lay the Christmas tree in the Triangle Park.
Does it say where to buy tickets or need tickets?
Any association member.
Or stop at the station.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, we are.
What's the in and out of the money for this raffle? And are you taking in, or are you gonna give out, what, approximately twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars? Why do you actually make that?
Yep, talking to the money man on Sweets over there.
They all stick out the money person. Probably about twenty thousand dollars is what the association will make on that raffle. Pay out is about twenty grand by the time you're looking at the ten thousand and the threes and the different stuff and the little things. And even like twenty-ninth place is again, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think it is, for twenty-ninth place. So you at least get your ticket back plus some, so.
Right.
Yep.
So they're not doing this for virtually no money?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they'll be turning a few dollars.
Right, good.
Good question, thank you.
Okay. Number seven, discuss scheduling future joint meeting. So we have another meeting up today.
I think normally Candy, Martin, I think isn't it September sometime, we just have one with, again, the same players, just giving some updates and everything else, but I think that's where we, I think, are we setting that date tonight or how are you doing that?
We can set it.
Can you want to do it outside of meeting?
Oh, would you like to do it that way?
We do that.
Okay. Yeah, you want to set it tonight?
You can do that. Everybody agreement? Set it up right?
And we'll give it to us in September. That's okay, we can spell the form.
Martin, you want to throw some dates out because you probably know the big, the larger impact of all the meetings in the village?
Well, the Wednesday, September fifteenth, or Wednesday, September twenty-second. Twenty-second works better for me. Hard having a meeting on the fifteenth.
Twenty-second works better than eighteen.
Twenty-second, you see?
Twenty-second, six thirty, here.
Yeah.
For Rachel?
Okay. Sounds like we have consensus, September twenty-second.
I think you close this meeting out now, and everybody gotta close out whatever they need to do.
Well, you just, just.
Well, you don't need to.
Nope.
Okay, very good. Okay, we will adjourn the town of Dunn and the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission at this point. So takes over now?
Uh, I don't think. Takes over reading that. Rachel, Rob.
Rachel? It's all yours?
Well, I think, don't we usually have you guys adjourn?
Oh, okay. Do we have a motion?
I didn't hear a motion by the way.
I made a motion during the.
Motion by the way, do you adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, we are adjourned.
I'm ready to adjourn the town of Dunn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Hearing none, we are adjourned.
However, before the town of Dunn leaves, I would like to thank you guys for your continued support of the senior center here. It's very appreciated.
Thanks for all the work that you do. I know it was a tough year with COVID and there were certainly a lot of challenges and a lot of families that struggled with big, unforeseeable things this year. So thanks for being there to support and help.
You?
Thank you. Okay. I'm lucky to be sucked into the quicksand because it is.
Okay, we'll keep moving with it.
Yeah, it, it really is.
Thank you.
See everybody, Marty. Good evening. The other half, no, the other quarter of the meeting. So I believe that all of you probably recently received a copy of the senior center municipal service agreement that you're all parts to and had a chance to look at it. The first part of the agenda dealing with the senior center is a review of the statistics that support that contract. So we have eleven months worth of statistics. The contract year for the senior center ends at the end of July. So you have eleven months worth of statistics there. And the way these are broken down, you have usage by municipalities, you have percentage of use by municipalities, and you have points by municipalities. Those are all important in how Lisa calculates what's the amount that each municipality is gonna pay. Yes. So it gives you a chance to look at what's been going on overall at the senior center for the last eleven months and what's been going on particularly for your municipality. And sometimes it's easier for people to understand if we talk about the fact that each column is divided into service provided and seniors. So if you look at usage by municipality, the first one under nine A, you see the village of Oregon, you'll see how many times the service was provided and how many different seniors received that service. It was a busy year, it was a strange year. I think most of you were on these boards when our annual report for twenty twenty came out. It was just, it was a strange year. So it's kind of hard to go back and compare and contrast these to past years because it was just totally different. But I'd be happy to take questions about how these statistics support the contract or what they actually mean, what we're providing in these categories, if anybody's got questions for it. Try to make them reasonably self-explan, sorry, that's the call. Yeah, Jerry?
Could you explain, there's a lot of new people here today. Could you explain the column that says others, what that means?
Okay.
How those people receive their services?
So the column on usage by municipalities that says others, there's a little number there that tells you down at the bottom, all these different places where seniors may be coming from and receiving certain services. So some services, like meals, the federal grant that provides meals, the Federal Old or Americans Act, requires us to offer a meal to any senior. So if somebody walks in here from Manhattan and wants a meal, they get a meal. But that meal is being underwritten by federal or Americans Act money, not by our tax dollars. So it doesn't matter where they're from, really. Some of the other things that other municipalities are receiving are services that they're paying for. So there's a column that says ADP, that's our state licensed adult daycare program. People pay for that service. So even though there may be somebody coming from Fitchburg attending our adult day program because Fitchburg doesn't have one, they're paying for that opportunity. And Fitchburg's making a donation on their behalf as well. Other things like exercise classes, we may have people coming from Stoughton for exercise. We may have people coming from Fitchburg for exercise. Again, they're paying for those services. So typically, the kind of, a lot of the others are coming here and making a donation. When they're not, like sheep's head on Tuesdays, very popular. There's people here from all over the place because we have it on Tuesday. I think Fitchburg has it on Wednesday. I think Stoughton has it. They just travel around from space to space. So, you know, our people are over there on one day, their people are here another day. It kind of works like that. Is that what you were getting at?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I do have another question, but I want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Did you notice any dramatic changes in usage during the pandemic?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's what, you're so, what were they?
We found a lot more emphasis on food. We served a lot more meals during the pandemic than we had the previous year. We had a lot more emphasis on people needing groceries delivered to them, people who no longer were willing to go out to the grocery store. We had to get food pantry supplies to people in their homes because they couldn't go to the food pantry. So food was a big thing. Exercise, which had been probably our most, after nutrition, has always, has in recent years been a huge growing piece of the senior center. Went backwards significantly because a lot of people weren't going, we couldn't offer in-person exercise classes and a lot of people weren't going to be able to, weren't able to access exercise virtually, either because they didn't have the technology or especially for some of our more rural seniors, they literally didn't have access to the internet even if they had wanted to participate. So, you know, there were certain things that grew and certain things that fell.
Just a follow-up on that exercise question. I imagine that for some people, it's not safe for them to exercise at home alone as well. And here is a safer place for them as far as being able to have other people around in case something were to happen.
Although the wonderful thing about Zoom is that it happens in real time. So when somebody goes down, everybody sees it and they're just as embarrassed when they fall at home as they are when they fall here. Yeah. So, you know, that is the benefit of Zoom, you're not really alone as long as you've turned your camera on. So I would say those, you know, food became very different, transportation changed a lot for people. It'll, it'll be interesting when the pandemic really kind of ends to see just where things really ultimately shifted and how things come back. So any other questions on usage or percentage of use or points or any of that stuff?
Rachel, can I just say that somebody who's been on the coalition, HCM, hasn't come here for meetings? Anybody who's not been here during the day, you better come because this is a hobbit place. This, it's, it is, there's a lot of stuff going on.
More than one visitor has stopped by in the midst of Zumba class and said, wait, this is a senior center? Because they don't expect that, that music. Which, which kind of brings us to our next agenda item, which is what's currently available, the services and a lot of limitations that we're still facing through the pandemic. And one of the things that's just coming back is those exercise classes. We don't have the Rockin' Zumba back until next month, but it'll be back. Strong Women, when our exercise classes started after the Fourth of July is doing well. So our exercise classes are phasing in, our hours are a little bit less open to the public. We're still here from eight to four, we're still answering the phone from eight to four, maybe home visits for people who need that. But actual activities in the center are being scheduled between eight-thirty and three. That gives us a little more time to clean and try and stay ahead of what might be in the building. We haven't opened the building back up to all the community groups that would like to use it in part because in the evenings is when we sometimes have our blue light machine up and zapping rooms and it's not something you want people to, they're not supposed to see that light. So hopefully we'll get there. We are, our bigger events aren't come, haven't come back yet. We'll see. We've had people, our meal site is opening again, so people can come in and have meals together. Trying to give people a range of options if they're. Trying to give people a range of options if they're preferring to be a little further away, sit by themselves, they have that option. If they want to sit with a couple of other people that, and they're all comfortable with that, they have that option as well. We're following all the guidelines about, you know, we don't put any of the dishware out until they're sitting in their seat, their silverware is wrapped in a napkin, and all, there's all this stuff. But we're back. A little bit different forms sometimes, but we're back. And so your packet included the most recent village board approved COVID policies, so you can kind of see what we're working with. We do have room limits, some space limits on spaces. So far, we haven't had to enforce those, we haven't had groups that big. Questions on that? Not? We'll go on to financial statements, where we're at at the six-month point. There's a couple of things that I'll point out to you. Chief was kind enough to make mention of air conditioners because he must have just known that I was going to talk about air conditioners.
I was hot when I first got in. It's a total cool.
Well, the air conditioning is now as functional as the air conditioning ever is in this building with five different units. But you might remember last year, it was the September meeting, we had found that two of our five air conditioning units had died. We were hopeful that insurance was going to cover those. Lightning strikes, insurance did very, very thorough study of those units and said, we're sorry, this is not lightning, this is age. And I know Jeff Rao, the Public Works Director here, spent quite a bit of time with the insurance investigator types and they explained a lot of stuff to him and he was personally convinced that it was not worth our time or effort to try and dispute that. So we ended up replacing two air conditioners, which because of the pandemic, air conditioners were not really very readily available last year. Everything was on back order and so they didn't come, we didn't actually get in and build until this year. So if you were looking through our budget, you would see like blousers, they're way over on building repair. Two air conditioners did that for us. However, in the overall scheme of things, we're still running under budget right now. So there's air conditioners and another thing that you might notice if you look at the budget is we've spent almost our entire annual allocation for Ziggy's. And that is because this, these figures don't reflect an additional $9300 for that program that the county just recently granted to us and the board approved. And so those numbers haven't dated in yet. So we're not going to have to close our Ziggy's program after next week or go thousands of dollars in the hole. The county grant will take care of that. So I'll take questions on the budget. We will get to the next, when we get to the next issue, the status of administrative assistants and that also plays into this budget. But other questions on the budget?
Rachel, could you kindly just make a comment? I mean, I know this seems to be consistent, but Dane County has been at least fine break, been very good to us in terms of funding.
Dane County has been very good to us. We've seen our funding increase incrementally over the last few years, in part because we've been able to provide services to more people in our service area. Our numbers have gone up for a variety of reasons. And so the more people we serve, the more money they're willing to give us.
And then there are times when they find, am I wrong, they find extra money.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah.
And which they give to us.
Yeah.
Which is great.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So our administrative assistant, you may remember, we were going to hire somebody to start in 2020, it was in the budget, to start somebody in 2020. We were excited. It was going to be the first hours we added in 20 years for, and then COVID. Just when the three candidates were going to come back for their second interviews. So we called them and said, gosh, you know, this doesn't seem like the time. And they said, thanks, we understand. So we went, moved back in that process. Now, the board, the village board confirmed the hiring of, of a new employee, full-time employee, to start August 2nd. This year's budget had included funding to start somebody April 1st. We weren't ready to do that yet, given where COVID was at that time, but we're going to start that person in August. So this all plays into the budget because last year, we didn't hire that person in the budget before, which meant we were under budget. The agreement that you all have with each other doesn't allow for a reserve fund. There is no opportunity for us to put that in a fund balance. It goes back to you guys and I don't know if LISA has quite gotten those numbers figured out yet, not as far as I know, how much is going to come back to each municipality in the TRUa. But I would strongly encourage you to hold on to that money in case one of the other three air conditioners decides it's time or something else happens because, you know, this is an old building. And last year, it was the preference of these boards that we not budget high for building failures, if you will, that y'all kind of decided you would rather budget at a, at a pretty basic level and then if something unforeseen happened to the building, find the funds to meet the need. And, you know, that's the way we want to operate. I'm perfectly willing to budget that way, but you're kind of all on notice that that's the way it's budgeted and if something happens to the building, you know, hopefully that money is available to you that came back because it's not in a, in a fund balance. So we will be starting a new administrative assistant, her name is Jill. And we're glad because as things are picking up, things are really picking up and we can use those hours. So any questions on that, budget in general? And that takes, if not, down to our service agreement. Senior Center service agreement runs out at the end of this year and we have been renewing this for either one or two years, ever since it was first developed, which I think was in 2013, if my memory is correct. The, the services that we're, that we provide at the center are not going to change as far as we can see for the next couple of years. And so unless anybody feels differently, this seems to have governed the center and its support pretty adequately since it first came into place. And so I guess my thought, certainly willing to take questions on it, but my thought is it, it took a lot of effort, energy and time to create this document. It seems to be working well. Is there any reason not to continue to use this for the next couple of years?
I have a question based on what you were just talking about. About the, the fund balance. Would there be any, would it make any sense to include a fund balance when you don't spend money to be able to hold it over? My understanding from what you said is that right now, if there's money left, then each of the municipalities is refunded. But as you said, you're, you're funding the building at a basic level and things happen. I mean, it is.
When the agreement was originally drafted, and I'm going to say, we happen to have Phil in the audience, he was at the time pretty mild in drafting the agreement. There was a, a kind of a consensus among the parties that, I mean, it was a debate, should there be a fund balance or shouldn't there? But the consensus pretty much was that municipalities would prefer to sort of manage their own funds.
Correct. And that's why, that was, you're right, that was the consensus, is that because there were multiple municipalities involved and there's, but it's basically a village, building, et cetera, et cetera, a little different fire district, so it's treated differently and it's a village, but, but, right. So then, basically it was decided at the time that we would be basically paid to go and that what the village would not essentially be holding funds that belonged to the town of Rutland and the town of Oregon. Instead, those towns agreed that we would pay as we go. And if, I think Rachel alluded to, at the end of the year, if there's not enough money, if there wasn't enough money to cover the maintenance items, then an invoice is actually set out to the town of Rutland and the town of Oregon to pay for that deficit. Or as Rachel, again, I think mentioned earlier, if there's a surplus that is sunk back. But it was discussed at length and decided against that.
Yep, that's my number as well.
Rachel, are you asking if we are in favor of a two-year agreement versus a one-year?
Yes. Great. I think if the parties are all willing to extend this, we might as well make the, whatever appropriate date changes need to be made in the document and be able to bring it back on September 22nd at the next meeting and just have it executed while everybody's here and then we're good to go for a couple more years.
Been working, I think, all right, good with it.
Nancy's nodding. One of them's nasty as honey.
Put it on the agenda, Rachel.
Put it on the agenda for the meeting on the 22nd? Just go ahead and update it.
Update it.
Two years? Two years? Two years?
I believe so. Yeah. Yeah, one year really doesn't make any sense.
It's the same, basically.
Okay.
Two years.
Couldn't get two years. Actually, our original one was three years. You know, the very first time we signed it, it was for three years, I believe. So, okay, we'll bring it back with date changes. And unless anybody has any other questions for me, I'm, that's what I wanted to present this evening.
I have just a question, how did the rat sale go with the drive-through?
Oh, the rat bash, thank you all for supporting that. Me, in two hours, two rather busy hours, we cleared 4,000, still over $4,000.
I had four.
So that was excellent.
Pretty, pretty far, yeah. I had four.
I walked in. Took ten land.
Well, it was amazing to us, the number of people in the community who came through and said, I'll take two, two brats, a dog, and they hand us a $50 bill and say, keep the change. You know, so people realized we hadn't been able to have fundraisers all through COVID and so it was really hard to hear that. Gosh, anything else?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty new at this, so I, pardon my ignorance, but the gentleman mentioned like the funds that you get from the townships and you either refund them or are there specific things that that money can or cannot be spent on? You mentioned like building problems or something. Or is it just a general fund?
When our, when our budget comes out, which Chief does a great job having his budget ready all nice and early, all things tied up, I can't do that if Dane County doesn't tell me soon enough what the, what the amounts are that we're going to be receiving from them. But there's a portion of the budget that's divided that you all share and based on those figures of use, the formula is created, what percent of the municipal support Rutland pays, the town of Oregon pays, the village pays. There's some other municipalities who give us donations, want some donations. At the end of the year, when the bills are all paid and our finance gal Lisa goes back and looks at what did we actually spend, where were we relative to that budget and figures out what money might come back to you, that money is Rutland's money. That money comes back to you guys to decide what you want to do with it. And so.
I, I understand it. I guess I'm just curious, is there, are there things you can and cannot spend that money on?
Oh, when we, you mean money that we get from you initially?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, this whole budget covers certain things. The things that you guys support are the electric bill kind of things, the, the furnace that goes per fluid. You don't pay for entertainment at the center, you don't pay for, mostly for the furnishings at the center. We have a 501(c)(3) supporting organization that covers a lot of what, what I would call the soft costs of, of running the center. So the municipal budget, you'll see in the budget progression what all kinds of things show up in that municipal budget. You won't see an entertainment section, you can't. So are there specific things that you have in mind?
No, there's not.
Right.
It seems to me, if it was up to me and Town of Rutland gave you X amount of dollars one year and you're going to give us back X amount of dollars whenever at the end of the year, seems to me I'd rather have you keep the money and hold on to it than just playing back and forth every year.
Well, and that, you know, that's the debate, should there be a fund balance or should there not be a fund balance?
Yeah. Because, you know, your fund balance could grow and you might need next to less, next, less the next year, but maybe it's just a wash at that point because you've already given us back money. But at least you don't have to go through the process again of, gee, now we got to send them a bill.
And the power, you know, when, when the people who put their brains together to draft disagreements did that, they chose not to include a mechanism for that kind of fund. So if you, if you want that to change, you can change the agreement, pardon, and that would have to be.
By township or by unanimous?
Well, you're all parties to the agreement, so I would think you would all have to agree to that.
Okay. I was just, like I said, I knew it, so I was just kind of curious.
Good question, good question.
Would the board be interested in us bringing back, maybe some proposed language for the September meeting for a potential fund balance addition to the agreement?
Mike?
Would that make your job easier?
I don't know that it would make my job any easier. I think it might make Lisa's job easier because Lisa is the one person who has to deal with that.
I think the, the logic at the time was because the bases change on the boards, that it's just easier just to close out the year and have the funds just returned and then you budget again and then replish.
And Rachel, do they, do they tend to be large amounts? I mean, does it depend on the year or, I mean, or is it small amounts, generally speaking?
Well, the amount is in part proportional to the amount of contribution. So for example, if one of the townships pays 12% of our support and we have a budget surplus of $52,000, they may get 12% of $52,000 back. So what the amounts have been the last few years, I really, that's what Lisa, the more than me thing, I don't, I don't know that it's huge amounts of money typically. Phil's got an observation back there.
Two things I would, if you don't mind me commenting, but Jerry hit it on the nail on the head, and that is when we negotiated the agreement, the main point was is that the idea of keeping a fund balance can change with one election. And because some people feel very strongly that the village seemed to be holding the town funds or vice versa. And so for that reason, we decided, and the second point I would say is that the only time when the towns would get billed is if the maintenance budget, maintenance costs go over budget. As I think you said, this year had trouble with the air conditioner, but you still are able to do it within budget. So we're not talking a lot of money that changes hands at the end of the year. Maybe $5,000 to, and some years to get money back. So it's, it's not a lot of money that we're talking about in any event.
Well, that's what I thought. And that's.
And that's why I'm thinking, you know, nobody's gonna get rich off of getting a five thousand dollar refund. And let these people keep it and use it as they say, see fit and build the township less or the maybe their fund they need next year would go down.
I, I guess my only reply to that is that Rachel and staff operate on a very specific budget, a specific line outing amounts that they can spend. And they don't have a, a, a cash account somewhere that they can say, "Oh, let's do this this week and take that extra money." Every penny has to fit in one of those budget lines. And if they have extra money, they really can't spend it unless it's been made part of the operational budget.
I understand that too. You know, I'm just saying like the next year, you might get less from the townships or...
Yeah, but one of the cha, I think one of the challenges there is that, um, we set those amounts, I mean, that's determined in the fall, by the next meeting in September, you'll know that. And here we are the next July and we don't even know yet just what the amount was that you deserved to get back from last year. And so, it, it, it's almost like the timing makes it a little challenging as well because the village goes through the audit process to determine just what all has happened with, um, the, the monies for the previous year. So, it would be, I think, a little bit challenging for us to try and figure out in time for our upcoming budget, what we can come up from last year that is left over. Does that make sense? Okay? Yeah, Dana?
I was just asking questions.
You know, you go right ahead and ask, make some thing about them.
That is a very interesting question. And it happens that just today, I had a two-hour conversation with Dawn George, Rutland's clerk, about budgeting. And we are getting, um, money back from another source. And Dawn was explaining to me how we can use that unexpected return of funds that again is proportional to what Rutland had to do with, um, the Stoughton Fire Department, actually. And so, we are, we're getting credited or refunded on the amount of money that was unused. And as it happened for Rutland, it came at an opportune time because we were, um, looking at fund balances in another account and we needed some money for another unexpected Rutland thing that came up. So, it really kind of covered and made it easy for us. And we're not talking about huge sums of money, but yet it was enough to us to shift a little bit, not changing like operations from one thing to the other. But it, it was a little bit of a cushion there for us that was practical and timely in this case. So, it worked for us at this point in one time.
Anything else?
I would comment on that.
Yeah.
I think we as a community here have, be very grateful for the leadership we have in our, our area with the chief and with us senior center and director. You guys are all standing and I truly appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
That's just the Town of Rutland.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I guess one last comment on, from the senior centers perspective for those of you who are part of the municipal working group. Um, our monthly meeting is tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. And I think we're just gonna forge ahead, it's on people's calendars, so let's see you tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mm-hmm. Yep, I think you're right, as we adjourn, yeah?
I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna adjourn the Town of Oregon.
I'm more for adjournments. Second, we're in a very discussion. If you're not in all favor, it's me saying, all right? All the same, say, okay. All of Oregon adjourn.
Um, call on a motion to adjourn the Town of Rutland. Second. We have a motion on the second. All in favor? Yes. The Town of Rutland is adjourned.
And I'll take a motion from the board to adjourn.
Okay.
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.